Well, it's ten o'clock. Let's get started. Will you all join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, welcome to the April 12th Planning Commission meeting. And Sue, will you start with roll call?
Yes, good morning. Mr. Herzog, even though you haven't been sworn in yet, I'm going to ask that you tell me that you're here. So, Mr. Herzog. Thank you. Mr. Okuchi.
Here.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
Mr. Severson is absent. Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Planning Commissioner? Director, I should say.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. EJ Valdi with the Planning Services Division. So first, of course, I want to welcome Planning Commissioner Herzog. I can say that now. You were appointed by the Board at last Tuesday's meeting to represent District Two. I was lucky enough to meet with Nathan earlier this week down at William Jessup University, where you've been there the past fourteen years. This guy's done his homework. He had a stack of documents when I was down there. We obviously talked about a lot of things coming down the pipe as far as Planning Commission items, but he's been very diligent reading. Rumor is that you've also been binge-watching Planning Commission tapes. So...
Oh, I... I'm already right.
So anyway, so it was, I really enjoyed that time down there, even though it was for a brief time. I also got kind of a snapshot tour of William Jessup University. I'm always in awe about how a gigantic, you know, furniture manufacturing facility has been repurposed for this full-fledged university, a successful university. So it just shows what can be done with some of these other projects that just haven't kind of met their, you know, met their original intent. So with that, in just a minute, like Sue said, we're going to swear you in, so you're official. So, other than that, District Five, we also have a vacancy. My understanding is that on the Board agenda for their Tahoe meeting, April 23rd or 24th, that there will be, they will be making an appointment for that position, which hopefully means we'll have a full commission by May. So looking forward to that. So I just handed you a, kind of a snapshot of everything that's in the works planning-wise, and that's development projects, special projects that the county's working on, and just, just kind of to give you overview of how this year's going to go. You know, we've started out a little light, but I keep warning that, that things are going to get very busy as we go along. Right now, we have sixteen EIRs that are currently in process with the county. Five of those are being led by other departments, so those will eventually be coming to the Commission for draft EIR hearings and then actually project considerations. There are about forty-three projects that we're working on mitigated negative declarations. About half of those are subject to the purview of your Planning Commission. And so those are other projects that will be on your future agendas. And I talk about pre-development meetings a lot. That's somewhat indicative of what may be coming, coming in as far as applications. We had forty, approximately forty last year, and we are right on the same pace this year. So it seems to be, everything's steady. Good news for us, you know, as a planning manager, is, you know, every funded planning position that we have is, is filled, and I got incredible staff working and managing on all of these projects. I'm very excited about that. For upcoming meetings, our next meeting in two weeks, April 26th, that meeting is going to be in Tahoe. There's just a, I think we have three or four items on that agenda. Most of them are subdivision modifications, smaller-sized projects. And then, May 10th, still working on what's going to be on that agenda, we'll be back in Auburn if we do have that meeting. So we'll let you know in a couple of weeks if that's confirmed or not. And then, towards the end of May, we'll be making another trip up to Tahoe. The big, one of the bigger projects there is the Base-to-Base Gondola. That's a connection from Squaw Valley to Alpine Meadows. That would be just the draft EIR hearing, so we can accept public comments. And then we'll also have a couple of other projects on that agenda as well. So that's kind of the schedule from here on out, at least for the next month or so. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
It looks like we could be very busy for the rest of the year.
Yes. You know, you know, midsummer to late summer, it starts really picking up, but, you know, as we get, you know, down to the fall and winter, you know, there's going to be, and I think we only have one meeting scheduled for November because of the holiday, as well as December. There may be a need to have a special meeting during that time, so if, if that's the case, you know, we'll let you know as far in advance as we can.
So you're not in, other than November and December, you're not anticipating additional meetings that you think we can...
Well, not right now, but that, that could change.
Yeah, because this looks like...
Typically, we don't like to do it during the holiday, just not only for the Commission, but for the general public, you know, who have usually had, you know, other vacation plans and things in the works, so we want to make sure we afford everybody the opportunity to attend these hearings.
Because some of these are not short issues. Some of them are going to be fairly lengthy.
Absolutely.
Because obviously, we're going to have the Sunset Industrial or Sunset Area Plan coming back, and we expect that one to be fairly lengthy.
So my expectation this year is, you know, we're definitely going to have a draft EIR hearing on that project sometime, you know, later this year, midsummer, and then we'll see, you know, where things go there. Obviously, you know, a lot depends on the comments we receive on those documents, how we respond to those comments, you know, and when we can actually get those complete and ready to, you know, submit for the Commission's review.
Yeah, and the winery ordinance will probably be a fairly lengthy discussion as well.
It could. Those have been lengthy in the past.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for EJ?
Perfect.
Okay. Now's the time for public comment on anything that's not on our agenda for today.
Do we have to swear in our new Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Jeff, for reminding me. I just jumped right to that. Okay. Sue, are you going to handle that, swearing in Nathan?
Please repeat after me. I, Nathan Herzog, do solemnly swear...
I, Nathan Herzog, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will defend the Constitution of the United States.
Sorry. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[543.41][543.41][applause]
Pass the first text. You have to give him a training session on how to turn on his microphone. Yeah, Jeff's helped him out with that already. Okay, now back to public comment on anything that's not on the agenda for today. And I would again mention that those comments will be limited to three minutes, and we do have the timer up there, and if you do speak, it'll be green until you have one minute left, and then it turns to yellow, and then you need to wrap up, and then when it turns to red, you are done. And that will also apply later on to comments on any of the items that we have as well. So we'll see no one jumping forward for public comment. We'll jump to our first item, which is, oh, consent agenda, I guess we need to deal with that. Any comments on consent or motions?
I'll make the motion, then we approve it.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Sue, roll call.
Okay, I have a first with Commissioner Johnson, a second by Commissioner Moss. Mr. Herzog. Sue? Thank you.
I don't think he can vote.
Just one comment. Commissioner Herzog was not a Commissioner or attending the last meeting, so unfortunately, he's not able to vote on these events.
I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Okuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move to our first item. Placer Vineyards, I guess, Callie. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Callie Kettenger Cecil, and I'm with the Planning Services Division. Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman, and welcome Commissioner Herzog. The item before you this morning is the Placer Vineyards Property 12B Small Lot Tentative Map. For a little background on Placer Vineyards, it is located in the southwest corner of Placer County, approximately fifteen miles north of Sacramento and south and west of the city limits of Roseville. It is in the Dry Creek-West Placer Community Plan area, and existing and surrounding specific plans include Regional University, Sierra Vista specific plan, and Rioelo Vineyard specific plan. The Placer Vineyard specific plan is 5,230 acres and 14,132 lots. Land uses include residential, commercial, business park, public and quasi-public, open space, and parks. The plan provides a comprehensive policy framework to guide development of the build-out of the plan area, in conjunction with approved development and land use standards, development agreements, and approved master plans. The specific plan was approved, and the EIR was adopted in 2007, and it was amended in 2012 and 2015. A number of master plans have been approved for the plan, including those for sewer, drainage, transit, landscaping, and the First Development Phasing Plan. The first phase of development is a 1,535-acre portion of the plan area, and it's shown here outlined in green. It includes properties 1A, 3, a portion of 4B, 7, 12B, 15, and a portion of 19. The first-phase development plan provides backbone infrastructure, including roadways, sewer, drainage, and water infrastructure, parks, bike paths, and trails. Large lot maps have been approved for the first development phase, and three small lot maps have been approved for properties 7, 19, and 4.
Apparently she objects to the timeline.
Dropping everything this morning. And we have applications in right now for small lot maps for properties 1A, which is located here, and property 15. The map before you today is for 12B. The tentative map for property 12B is 102 acres with 377 lots. There would be 365 medium-density residential lots in the four residential villages, and 38 dwelling units in a commercial mixed-use lot. The plan, or the project, is requesting approval of a residential density bonus to increase the total amount of units to 403. This would be a 23-unit increase. In order to obtain the additional units, the project is increasing its obligation for affordable housing. I'll discuss this a bit more later, but the residential density bonus is allowed per Placer County Zoning Ordinance Section 17.54.120, as well as California Government Code 65915. Property 12B is located in the south-central portion of the plan area and is zoned Placer Vineyard specific plan. It is a half a mile south of Baseline Road and a half a mile east of Pallody Road, and is just north of the Placer and Sacramento County line. Land uses are primarily medium-density residential in these four lots here. Lot sizes would range from 4,500 square feet to 5,755 square feet. Additional land uses include the commercial mixed-use lot, a park site, an elementary school, and two open-space lots. This lot here is a drainage-open-space lot. The project is required to construct both onsite and offsite improvements. Onsite improvements would be constructed in two phases. The first phase is Phase 1A, as shown here in blue. This includes roadway construction, utility trenching, and roundabouts located here. And then Phase 1B is shown in this tan-orange, and that includes completion of the roadways and signals here. I also forgot to mention that Phase 1A, the first phase, would include, would include masquerading of the entire site. The project is also required to install sound walls along residential uses on 16th Street and Dire Lane. Offsite improvements for the project include backbone roadways, shown in yellow, on Baseline Road, 16th Street, and Dire Lane; secondary roadways, shown here in orange and green; water line; sewer force mains, shown in purple; a gravity force main; and a lift station on future property 16; and then storm drainage improvements are shown in green. A comprehensive environmental review process was prepared for the entire plan area. Property 12B, for that project, we performed a subsequent conformity review, and this includes an environmental checklist, as well as a policy consistency review. As allowed by SEQA, this process, it's a streamlined process that allows the county to rely on previous environmental documentation if the project is consistent with the specific plan, and if no changes have occurred since adoption of the EIR. Property 12B is proposing a density bonus, which is a change since the adoption of the EIR, and this was reviewed by staff in the environmental checklist. The environmental checklist is included as Attachment C, and we determined that the increase in units is a minimal change, and no environmental impacts were identified. We also prepared a policy consistency review. This is Attachment D to the staff report, and we determined that property 12B is consistent with the specific plan policies. Property 12B was presented to the West Placer MAC on May 10th, 2016, as an information item, and also on March 14th, 2018, as an action item. At the March 14th MAC meeting, the MAC discussed concerns about ensuring that this special plan area remain real residential, and also had concerns about the residential density bonus and the potential for the density bonus to be precedent-setting across the entire plan area. Lastly, the MAC discussed concerns about the need for the public to consider the residential density bonus. At the action hearing at the MAC, they took a vote, two to one, to recommend to your Commission to deny the project as presented. Staff at this time would like to note that Condition Number 183 will be deleted because this is a duplicate of Condition Number 179, and the last two sentences for Condition 65 will be modified, and Phil France from Engineering and Surveying is going to read these conditions into the record.
Thank you, Callie. Condition 65B and D, we have changes to. It's the same change for both, both conditions. The last sentence will be deleted and replaced with the following. "A highway easement shall be dedicated for the south leg that shall accommodate an ultimate curb-to-curb width that includes one additional future northbound through lane." We have discussed the, this condition change with the applicant and with the owners' group, and I believe they are in agreement with this change. If there's any questions, I'll be able to answer them at that time. Thanks, Callie.
Thank you, Phil. So with that, staff would like to recommend that your Commission determine the potential impacts of the project as described on Page 11 of the staff report and supported by the findings contained therein, and take action to approve the Placer Vineyards Property 12B Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map and the Residential Density Bonus as described on Page 12 of the staff report and supported by the findings and conditions contained therein. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Callie. Any questions at this time for Callie?
Just, just review again, the, the density bonus is for why?
The density bonus is to allow for an additional 23 units. In exchange for the density bonus, they are obligated to provide additional very-low-income households.
Okay, that is a trade-off, okay.
And I have Shawna Purvines here. She's our Housing Specialist. She can discuss a little bit more in detail the, that, the density bonus.
Let me see, the density bonus, the low cost, is that's going to be in the mixed-use zoned area?
No, it's going to be in the medium-density residential.
In where now?
In the medium-density residential, so I'll go back. It would be here. It would be located within the medium-density residential.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Callie.
All right, thank you.
Would the applicant like to make any additional comments, Callie?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Make a few comments, but I'll be brief, since the voice is on the way back, but it's not all the way back yet. My name is Michael Smith. I'm with McCann-Somps. We're representing the project applicant. The owner's representative, Mr. Gus Galaxitis, is also here to answer any questions, if you have any. We've reviewed the staff report, the proposed conditions of approval, the proposed changes, the deletion of one condition that's duplicative and in revised wording, and we're agreement with those, and would respectfully request your approval of the project. If you have any questions, be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions at this time? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up for a public comment, and again, as I mentioned earlier, I'll ask you to hold it to three minutes. So anyone want to comment on this? Okay, and I'll close it for the public comments and bring it back to the Commission for your pleasure.
Quick question, if I could, Callie? The additional lots that will be gained because of the, the low-income housing element, are those deed-restricted to remain that, or how are those, how is that addressed?
Yes, they, they are deed-restricted, and there's a very specific set of conditions in the conditions of approval that outlines the requirements for those deed restrictions.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I'll move this back to the recommendation slides.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or motion or...
Mr. Chairman, will make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
I make a motion that, based on the analysis in the report, that the Planning Commission take the action to determine that the potential impacts of the proposed Property 12B Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map, which is part of the Placer Vineyards Specific Plan Development Phase, are within the scope of the analysis of the 2007 Certified Placer Vineyards Final Environmental Impact Report, supported by the findings. We're doing these one at a time?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so supported by the findings that are in the staff report.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Okay, I have a first by Commissioner Moss and a second by Commissioner Okuchi. Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Okuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Prior to the second motion, we, we do have it up on the screen, but be sure to include the changes to conditions as proposed by staff. That's what the...
We're removing Condition 183, and we've modified Condition 65B and D. Am I missing something?
That's correct.
Okay. Then, Mr. Chairman, with your approval, I would move that we approve the Placer Vineyards Property 12B Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map and residential density bonus that will create 377 lots, including 365 medium-density residential lots, plus 23 density units and one commercial mixed unit lot, within thirty, with 38 dwelling units for a total of 403 units, including 5% of the affordable units for occupancy of very-low-income households for a total of 11% of the total residential units to be affordable housing consistent with Placer County general plan. The Placer Vineyard specific plan, Placer County Zoning Ordinance Section 1754.120, residential density bonuses, and California Government Code Section 65915. The density bonus increased the total number of units on the property 12B from 380 to 403. In addition, the small lot vesting tentative subdivision map will create one neighborhood park, one school lot, two open-space lots, and seven landscape lots within the previously approved Placer Vineyard specifics plan, all supported by the following findings in the staff report, and with the removal of Condition 183 and Condition 65B and D as modified and read into the record earlier.
Is that all good? Okay, we got a thumbs up, so good. Was there a second? Congratulations on that.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Sue, roll call.
I have a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Okuchi. So if I could have a vote for Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Okuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our 10:25 item, and believe it or not, we're almost right on time. So Christopher, good morning, Christopher.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, Commissioner Herzog. Krishmit with the Planning Services Division. The next project before you for your consideration is the Cleanest Estates Subdivision in Granite Bay. The property site is looking on the south side of Joe Rogers Road between Auburn Folsom Road and Douglas Boulevard. 8137 Joe Rogers Road is the address. There's a closer-up aerial of the, the subject site. There was a previous house on the property in a contractor's storage yard that had been removed. There's not many trees. It's been pretty disturbed. Vargas Lane is located east of the site. Joe Rogers on the north, and privately owned and maintained Sturm Lane is located on the west. Land use designations in the area, surrounded by low-density residential, including the project site, and then a mix of land use, commercial, along Douglas and Auburn Folsom, and then lower density to the north and to the northwest. Area zoning, the property and surrounding parcels are residential, single-family, combining agriculture with a minimum building site of 20,000 square feet. The project as proposed is consistent with the zoning and the land use designation. A few pictures of the project site, this is taken from Joe Rogers Road looking south towards the southern property line here. This is a cluster of trees on the northern edge of the property. Sturm Lane is over here. Joe Rogers is out front here. This is looking to the east. These are the homes along Vargas Lane. This is the southern property line with a significant stand of trees on this neighbor's property, an existing fence. This is the project site plan. The applicant, Dave Cook, consulting on behalf of property owner Paul Hills, is proposing a 10-lot subdivision with lot sizes of 20,000 square feet to 26,873 square feet, access from a private road off of Joe Rogers Road. So this will be privately owned and maintained. There's no access proposed to Sturm Lane. Requested entitlements, a vesting tentative subdivision map for the subdivision of a 5.5, 5.49-acre site into 10 single-family lots. The applicant is also seeking a variance to front minimum setbacks required in the RS zoning district on lots 1 through 5. Paul Hills, the property owner, is also a builder. He'll be, be building all the homes in the project, so they'll have a consistent look. The architecture is rustic contemporary. The project is proposed to be built in a single phase. There'll be a mix of one- and two-story residences. Just looking at the compatibility with neighboring properties, I mentioned the variance. Due to the layout of the project, of the site, with Joe Rogers frontage, the new, oop, the new cul-de-sac, or the new road and the cul-de-sac, and also Sturm Lane on the west, these lots here have two front setback requirements, which the front setback in the RS district is 60 feet from center line. So two front setbacks on these lots would really constrain the buildable area of the lot. So they're seeking 40 and a half feet from center line, where 60-foot is normally required. required. There is the easement for Sturm Lane on this property. The applicant is proposing to landscape it and not widen Sturm Lane, so 17-foot landscape buffer along Sturm. Setbacks elsewhere, the side setbacks are 15 feet as required. Rear setbacks on one story in the RS Zone District, B20, is 10 feet minimum. Two stories is 20 feet minimum. The applicant is proposing 10 feet as required for the first story, but bumping back the second floor to 30 feet, just to provide a little bit more privacy and space between the new homes and existing neighbors. So, this looks at the building envelopes that are proposed, the rear setback reduced 40 and 1/2 feet from center line where 60 is normally required. You still have a pretty good setback here compared to what's required in the zoning district for rear setbacks. The 10 feet minimum on one story, 30 feet for two-story. Side setbacks, no change, 15 feet. Residential design, just want to point out, on a two-story residence, this is the first floor of a two-story residence, and this is the second story, Paul Hill has agreed that no windows on the second story would face two neighbors. So, on this bedroom, this window faces to the side property line. So, just additional more privacy through the design of the homes. Tree impacts, there's 23 trees on the site. 16 will be removed. Nine will be mitigated for. Existing trees on the eastern property line will remain. All this is pretty much graded and can't be saved, and the health of a lot of these trees is poor. Just looking at the fencing plan, there'll be a masonry sound wall along Joe Rogers Road. This existing wood fence on the southern property line will remain. They'll be replacing the fencing along Vargas Lane with an enhanced wood fence, and you'll see what that looks like. And then a five-foot open-view fence along that landscape strip, along Sturm Lane. This shows the landscaping plan for LID and for flood management. There'll be bioswale plantings on both sides of the street. This shows a planting pellet that's proposed for the project. The median, or the median of the cul-de-sac will be landscaped, and there'll be stamped concrete pavement for decorative purposes. This shows the cross-section along Sturm Lane, the existing road. The lots up here will be a little bit higher, open-view fencing, and 17 feet of landscaping. This looks at the project entryway, olive trees, solid fencing, masonry fencing, a decorative entrance feature here, and stamped concrete also. Subdivision will not be gated. Not much pedestrian connectivity in this area of Granite Bay. We are installing a DG path from the beginning of the subdivision to the east. Traffic study for the project, anticipated 95 new daily trips in and out of the project per day, eight during the AM peak hour and 10 in the PM peak hour. And just for comparison, the existing traffic count on Joe Rogers is 947 vehicles per day, so about a 10% increase in traffic. The traffic study looked at the project's impact to surrounding intersections, and none of the surrounding intersections fell into the level that mitigation would be required. The cumulative impact of the proposed project was also not significant. The project will be paying traffic fees to pay for regional circulation improvements. We looked at the project access with 30 mile-per-hour design speed on Joe Rogers. There's adequate access in both directions at the project entryway. Based on the traffic anticipated, the applicant doesn't need to construct a left turn lane into the project. The intersection offsets do not meet the 150-foot county guideline. There's some private streets on the north side of Joe Rogers Road, but because the traffic bottoms are so low, changing the proposed access point was not recommended. Looked at drainage on the project. Everything on this site will flow to the north where Miners Ravine is about 800 feet in this direction. So, there's three existing culverts. Everything here will flow towards the road, these bioswales, up and out. There are known drainage, flooding issues in the area, especially around the Itchy Acres neighborhood. This does not impact Itchy Acres that is to the west. All this, as you can see, flows across the street and swells to Miners Ravine, which is right here. So, this project does not increase flows off-site and doesn't make any flooding problems any worse. We went to the Granite Bay MAC as an information item last year, and then also at the March 7 meeting for a vote. They voted 5-0 to support the project, recommended approval to the planning commission. A few of the issues raised, the need for the setback variance, the amount of impervious surface more of a question than a comment, questions about the drainage impacts, and then some thought that the tree loss was significant. And with that, the planning department and development review committee recommends adoption of the mitigating negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project, supported by the findings contained in the staff report. We ask that you approve the vesting tentative subdivision map to allow for the subdivision of a 5.49-acre site into a 10-lot, single-family residential development, subject to the conditions of approval and supported by the findings also contained in the staff report, and then approve a variance to reduce minimum front setbacks, normally required in the residential, single-family RS zoning district on lots 1 through 5, to allow a front, which is really the rear yard setback, of 40 and 1/2 feet from the center line of Sturm Lane where 60 feet is normally required, subject to the conditions of approval and supported by the findings contained in the staff report. And with that, it'd be happening. Any questions?
Thank you, Christopher. Any questions?
I have, Chris, could you review again, that's a good map to have up. Now, with the variance, what will be the actual setback on those lots, 1 through 5? Again, could you review those in relationship to not only the other lots, but also the county ordinance from the property line, not the center line?
So, it's 32 feet from the property line.
30 feet?
32 feet from property line is the new setback.
From the new, with a variance, it would be 30 feet?
32, 32 feet from the property line. So, the property line is this dark line here. But there's a 17-foot easement, or wait, this is the property line. Yeah, dark line is the property line. There's a 17-foot easement, right-away easement, on the east side of this line. So, from the property line to the blue edge is 32 feet.
So, it'll be, it'll be in excess, by two feet of what required on the other side, which is the second floor is 30?
It'll actually be 20 feet farther, because you're allowed 10 feet on first floor on a rear setback. They'll have 32 feet here.
So, it'll be more?
It'll be more.
On this lot than is required on the other side?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now, apparently, the road is going to be less than 32 feet wide, and no sidewalks?
Correct. There's, we looked at that when we reviewed the project. There's really no sidewalks in developments in this area, and they're trying to keep a more rural Granite Bay feel and not an urban look. So, it'd kind of be sidewalks to nowhere. We did ask for the DG path, just in case anything is done along Joe Rogers Road to connect to Auburn Folsom, as far as pathway goes. But there's nothing here today, so this will kind of just end.
Okay, and consistent with the narrowing of the road, I guess I'm a little confused. It sounds like they have to provide four parking places, and that doesn't include the garage. Is that correct?
Correct. So, our parking standards in our zoning ordinance, when your road is less than 32 feet wide, we assume you can't park cars on the road, just because of safety issues for the most part, and we require four off-street parking spaces per lot when the house is on that narrow road, 32, less than 32 feet.
And that doesn't include the garage?
Our ordinance says you do not count garage parking. So, these lots are big enough and they're laid out that there'll be four, at least four car parking in the driveways. So, they meet our parking standards.
Okay.
Yes?
The zoning ordinance update that we're working on also, that would, that's one of those that's addressing, that would take care of the need for the variance here?
Correct.
That were in place already, and that double frontage issue?
Yeah. So, that has been proposed, that you would only have one front, typically where the front door is or the garage door. So, this would be the real front. This would be a rear, or it'd actually be a side. You'd have two sides here, a front and then a street side. I guess they might have two street sides. Today, this is a front, this is a front, and this is a front.
So, that's why we're trying to clean that up.
Correct.
The other question I had, where the driveways will cross the bioswale, are we building like a bridge, or is that going in a culvert?
It'll just be a culvert.
Okay.
Payment culvert.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you speak to why MND was selected to meet CEQA qualifications?
Sure. So, we looked at all the potential impacts of the project, and there was nothing that stood out or was to the point where we couldn't mitigate to less than significant. So, MND is fairly typical for this, unless, for instance, traffic is so bad that just these additional 95 cars threw an intersection off, where they might have to do offset improvements that, or couldn't be mitigated for, or wasn't in the capital improvement plan for the Granite Bay area. But with such a smaller project and not a lot of issues, an MND is fine.
And one more, I read quite a few statements about the concerns for flooding and heard your comments about that, and I just want to reiterate that there is no concern about other areas being affected by runoff in this community through the development?
There was a lot of discussion from neighbors, the applicant, to their credit, had a big meeting with neighbors on site, with about 30 neighbors showed up, and then did a follow-up with a few of the organizers of that neighborhood group later on at Mr. Hill's office, and talked about flooding issues, and kind of explained to them the methodology behind the flood study that was done here and the obligations of the applicant. So, under county ordinance, we only require that this project not make matters worse. So, everything on this site can flow off-site through these private yards. We just can't make it rush off and make conditions worse here. A lot of their issues are in the Itchy Acres area, which is east. It's been a flooding problem down there for the longest time. The county recognizes it's a problem. The applicant recognizes it's a problem, but it's not the applicant's responsibility to fix what's happening over here. So, I think most of the neighbors, once they realized the applicant wouldn't be required to fix this, that there's other things that can be done through the county to address that, and that the flood study showed that we weren't making matters worse crossing Joe Rogers and out to Miners Ravine, and actually making things better, because some of the water today is flowing this way on the Sturm. With the grading plans, it's all going to flow to the center of the road, up and out. So, I think they were pretty satisfied that this project, as proposed and as designed, isn't going to have a bad impact or make things worse in the neighborhood.
Christopher, there was no requirement for retention during high events?
Correct. We don't require retention on site, but the bioswales will retain water back a little bit.
Okay, and the drainage will come off those lots, and where's it going to go? Is there going to be a pipe through there that'll gather that and then take it across Joe Rogers Road?
No, it'll use the bioswales to head north. And then there's three existing culverts under the road. It'll go through that and then out to Miners.
Okay. Now, you said it was 800 feet to Miners Ravine on the other side of Joe Rogers Road, and it's just going to be surface, travel surface through those areas. Now, is that, I'm assuming that you, that it's been reviewed as to making sure that those areas, that 800 feet, can accommodate the runoff that's going to come off of this development, and that isn't going to cause any issues to those property owners between Joe Rogers and Miners Ravine?
Correct. They was looked at, and this'll actually improve conditions because it'll be a slower release through that, to the north. It'll pull this water back a little bit. Today, it just rushes straight out quickly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Would the applicant like to make some additional comments, Christopher's?
I'd prefer to follow the public comment, if that's okay with you.
It's fine. Okay, we'll open it up to public comment, and again, I would ask that you hold your comments to three minutes, so. If you could give us your name.
Good morning. I'm Sandy Harris. It's nice to come up and be able to support a project in our area. I think they've done a good job of trying to work out with the neighbors with the flooding. Miners Ravine does go through my subdivision, and it is, it can be a river, has taken out two of our bridges in the past. The only comments I would have, one, they didn't ask for a general plan amendment. That's wonderful. We don't see that very often. I think they have tried to work out the flooding issues, and they didn't ask for gates, which wouldn't have been approved anyway because it doesn't qualify, but they still come in and ask usually. And the comment, a negative comment, and it's a county requirement, that they put up sound walls. There aren't any sound walls on Joe Rogers Road, and they even say the traffic volume's not very high, and it just seems out of place to be putting a six-foot masonry wall in that area. But otherwise, it looks pretty good.
Thank you, Sandy. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else would like to comment on this? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Dave, do you want to say anything?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Dave Cook, Cook Development Consulting, here on behalf of Hills Construction. Yeah, to Sandy's point, it's sort of fun to have a relatively non-controversial project. I've got plenty of others that have got a little bit more complexity. But this had enough complexity by virtue of the drainage, and anytime you've got an infill project, you've got to be sensitive to impacts on the neighbors. And as most of you know, I've been doing this for a while, and one of my key approaches in this business is reach out to the neighbors, and that was the first thing that we did. And we met with the west and south neighbors last April. We met with the eastern neighbors after that in separate meetings in Paul's office. Edge conditions, drainage, and most importantly, what's going to be built, how's that going to affect my view? The homes off of Vargas, and you can tell by the aerial, in most cases have very small rear yard setbacks. And so, that's where we started looking at, what can we do with the design of the homes to minimize those impacts, and given the fact that Paul is both a developer and a builder, and he designs his own product, we were able to come up with something to respect that privacy and still have a good-looking product and an attractive market aspect as well. Once we worked through those, then because of comments that were raised at the MAC, we facilitated an onsite meeting, as Chris referred to. We had a dozen-plus neighbors, and they came from Itchy Acres as well as the immediate neighborhood, and it was probably not the best venue or structure for a meeting like that, because a little difficult to keep chaos at a minimum, when you've got everybody standing around with their pictures of when it flooded last and how it affected their yards. But nevertheless, between the comments there, and we had Brad Brewer from the Flood Control District, we were able to at least hear those concerns, respond to some of the questions, and from that, we went back out, and we didn't have to. As Chris indicated, our drainage analysis meets the county standard. It met the county standard first time around, and that is not have any downstream impacts. But based on those concerns and wanting to be a good neighbor, we actually did some additional surveying, both on properties to the east, because there were some interesting shed conditions there, and that resulted in a little drainage easement through. But we also went and surveyed to the north, all the way to Miners Ravine, to the extent that we could, because our calculations clearly indicated there was capacity, clearly indicated we weren't increasing flows off-site, but there were concerns and problems. And at the end of the day, we did that surveying and reran the model. We also took the standard impervious level of 40%, and we ran the model at 70%, because we said larger homes, maybe they put in more pool area. Let's go above and beyond and make certain that the model still supports the conclusions. With that, we decided not to have a repeat of the dozen-plus hap- happy neighbors and we met with three key folks. One who is a manager of Flood Control District, so he understands hydrology, because this really gets down to a very technical discussion and it's tough when somebody's yard is flooded to help them understand that, number one, this project of five acres is so minute in the overall scale of this watershed that just on the surface, it can barely have any effect. But we went through the new study with these three folks. They had flood control there as well. We had our hydrology engineer there. And after a couple of hours, it became clear to them that yes, our study was consistent with the county standard. We'd gone above and beyond with the additional information. And in fact, as Chris indicated, we will improve the situation. We'll have improved roadside ditch along the front of Joe Rogers. We will take care of some drainage issues on Sturm Lane. There's a drain inlet that goes west that needs to be replaced most likely. The pipe may also be crushed. We'll look at that when we do those improvements. But for the most part, the shed that currently goes across Sturm Lane and those yards to the west gets tilted into the road. So we're controlling that. We're tilting the subdivision to the north with the grading and we put those flows in the bioswells. And as Chris explained, that gives us a little bit of delay on the offsite flows. With that, I think the other really important learning experience from this that we were able to convey to these guys and they've shared with their neighbors, there's only so much we can do and we're obligated to do for a project. There's only so much the county can do. The bottom line is, the biggest part of the problem in a lot of these areas are the folks that either don't understand or just don't take the time to maintain the drainage across their yards. There's one non-owner-occupied property sort of midway and they have filled in pipes and they've filled in ditches to facilitate greater parking and have a bigger yard. And that's great until you've got a significant storm event, in which case that water starts to move all over the place. And hopefully, we've helped them sort of open the dialogue with flood control and work with the county because there are some things they can do to protect themselves going forward. Chris may or may not have mentioned it, I don't recall, but the north side of Joe Rogers Road is the edge of the 100-year floodplain. They are in the 100-year floodplain in this area. So that already exists. Some of those homes, and some of you have been around long enough to remember the floods in the 80s, some of those homes have been raised out of the floodplain. There were grant funds that were made available for that. So they've got an existing problem and they need to be more diligent about taking care of those facilities. But at the end of the day, I do think there's a greater understanding. We did not reach out, I did not reach back out to those dozen who had attended. I think, you know, one key is how few are at the MAC meeting, how few are here expressing concern. I had asked that the three we had met with provide some sort of confirmation, acknowledgement of our efforts and the conclusion. Didn't hear back from the one who's in the flood control business, if you will. One person said he wasn't going to take a position. And then I did get an email and I don't know if this, it came in last night at 5:55. I'm not sure if Chris was able to share that, but from a Jerry Manzer who's on Itchy Acres, he happens to be that neighborhood watch captain. He basically grabbed me professionally after the MAC meeting and just said, can we meet to talk about some of these things? So he became sort of my contact with the neighbors. And if you got the email, basically, you know, he's saying he's still not convinced, but he's got a much greater level of comfort and clearly appreciated the effort that we went to to really demonstrate that we had analyzed this and taken those additional steps to analyze it in even more of a conservative fashion. So with that, you know, we feel like we've got a good project here. It's consistent with the zoning, as Sandy points out. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, we'd appreciate your support and approval.
Go ahead.
Let me see, when you get, you said there's 800 feet between the Joe Rogers Road and the Miners Ravine. And just for information, could you describe the, how the drainage gets to Miners Ravine through that 800 feet?
Yeah, Chris, can you get back to that or?
Do we have a slide really that really shows?
About two slides back.
Go this way. Was it number 43?
Now you've done it.
Chris, can you help?
I didn't drop it.
It's there.
I might as well have. The first property to the north, so we've got the triple culverts under Joe Rogers. First property to the north, there's a fairly well-defined swale. It's the next property, if I'm not mistaken, where it basically, there's a little bit of a pipe, but then there's been a pipe that's filled in.
There.
There you go. That almost gets us there. Yeah. Yeah, so you've got a little bit of a defined swale in here, but across this property before you get to, I want to say, is that Iowa Court there? It's this property where they've blocked off the pipes and done some regrading. And then the next property up in here, they've actually done a fair amount of cobble-lined swales. Now, once you get back up into the trees here, out of their yard, it's a bit of a jungle and it was very difficult for the surveyors to get any sort of data. So the biggest problem, I believe, is, aside from the pointer, the middle property that I referenced and then at the tail end. So now they're aware of that and they do have an obligation, I think as most of us understand, to accept upstream flows, just not increased upstream flows.
So there's not an easement for this? It's just the swell, it's existed over time?
Yeah. And this is an older subdivision. I would not expect to see a meandering drainage easement on there, although that may be the case.
I don't think so.
Yeah. I mean, I think because of the age of this, it's just, they've always accepted these waters that have come across there.
And so if they get flooded, that's their business, right?
Well, if they get flooded, back to the analysis that was done, the 100-year floodplain and the impacts on them are a result of their location within an existing 100-year floodplain and its flows and the timing of those flows coming down Miners Ravine, it's not flows that would come from here. And that's what the hydrology study has to analyze and basically confirm the satisfaction of flood control and the county engineers.
I guess, so this, you know, goes under the road in a culvert and it heads off, the water heads off to Miners Ravine?
Correct.
And is that a natural swale or ephemeral drainage that was there before or is it just people built their houses around it and didn't pay attention to what they're doing?
I'm not, probably all of the above.
Huh?
I'm not certain how to answer that, but I would assume...
Was it a natural swale?
At some point in time, there might have been a natural swale there. But, you know, this subdivision was, these areas were built in the like late 50s to the mid 60s at a time when the standards were very different than they are now.
Okay. Well, I guess, you know, it sounds like there's nothing that we can do about it, but it sounds like it's their problem if they get flooded, right?
Again, the thing that I think we can do about it, and I had a long conversation with Jerry Manzer about this yesterday because he and a couple of his guys really, after the floods in the 80s, really made a great deal of effort to reach out to the neighbors and help them understand what they should and could do. And he was just sharing how surprised he was. Some went, yeah, we know, but we can't afford to or we don't have the time. And others had no clue that there was anything that they were or weren't doing that might have any kind of an impact. And here, the biggest problem is this center property, which is non-owner-occupied. That's the only property owner, even though I sent a letter to the owner's address, not here, the only property owner that didn't respond. Others responded, gave us permission to get out there. And even going to knock on the door, nobody would answer, but people were home. So they just, folks just don't want to be bothered with those sorts of details. And that particular house is primarily a second-story home, so maybe they're not that concerned about what happens if the waters get up that high. But hopefully, again, aside from having the confidence that we did the proper analysis and then went above and beyond, I hope the dialogue that was established helps these folks get a little bit more engaged with the county because there are some things the county ought to be doing, at least on the roadside ditches for more frequent maintenance. But even with that, if the people don't take care of these cross-yard drainages or the sidelot drainages that help convey the flows to Miners, it's not going to matter.
This culvert underneath the road has always been there. There's no changes with regards to that?
No. From a standpoint of always, I think it was replaced, well, there are three, and I want to say they're 18-inch. And I think they were replaced within the last 10 years. But Joe Rogers Road has been there for quite a few years, so it's not something... And I think that, to an extent, is telling, we're not having to add any additional culverts. We're using the facilities that exist. Yeah.
Okay, and it's a county road, so, okay, I guess...
Yeah.
Just kind of struggling with the guy that filled in his drainage, but if they get flooded, they'll want to complain. But it sounds like they can complain, but it's going to be their problem to solve.
Yeah. In a perfect world, if the county had unlimited resources, both financially and staff-wise, you'd put together some sort of a, maybe a district, if you will. You know, you can do a hazard district. The term doesn't come to mind right now, but where they basically could band together and fund improvements and assess the properties, sort of like a CFD, but more of just a specific hazard.
They'd have to grant an easement through their property.
Probably have to grant easements, have an engineer that oversees that, but it would give them a mechanism to basically have somebody else come in and take care of it. And that's something that we talked about in a couple of the meetings. Nobody seemed to be, I mean, they were intrigued by it, but nobody seemed to be that interested that they were going to step up and try to take that lead. And that's obviously beyond our scope for my client on this project because, again, we've met and exceeded, I think, the county standard, so.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cook? Dave, I wanted to ask about, again, that, you know, it says, it sounds like there's going to be some constriction in the middle property. And I don't know the extent of the fall from, you know, obviously from Joe Rogers out to Miners Ravine. Is it possible because of that constriction in between that it could back up between Joe Rogers to that constriction on those two properties that are right there? Could the water back up into them because it's, because of that?
We did not survey all the way to the existing homes. I don't know what that terrain does. It does, it does get a little higher toward the homes.
Maybe you could step up and address that.
Casey Fiker with TSD, our civil engineer on the project.
Good morning, Casey Fiker, TSD Engineering. The question has to do with how far does that water back up? We did not survey all the way to the homes, but we did survey out about 50 feet from that flow line. It does start to climb up in elevation. There could be potential that it goes that way, but like I said, I don't have the full, the finished floor elevations of those existing homes. A good portion of it, the first three-quarters of that drainage, it is contained within the drainage way, the natural drainage way.
Because it looks like there's two residences there near, again, Joe Rogers on either side of where it's going to drain.
The first two residents, that's where it is more defined?
They look pretty close, and so I don't know what the fall is.
That is much more defined. That is the area that is well-defined for the drainage. It is further down when there's, it's more of a open field, front yards, kind of sideyard situation where that drainage was backfilled.
But I guess my question is that if, you know, that water's going down and it hits that area that's been covered up, is it going to back up around those two houses?
There is more fall going north than before it comes backward. So it will release to the north, but to the east and west, I don't know how far it goes before it releases north.
So it's going to get through that first...
Yes.
Couple of properties?
Yes.
And then it may spread out because of that?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? The only thing I would like to add is, I really appreciate, Dave, the extra effort that you've made and the developer has made to reach out to the community. I think it makes a real difference when a developer does that because I think the community then has a chance to voice their concerns and to, for the developer to hear those concerns and try to respond to those concerns. I think there's a lot of times when we hear on projects where the developers, just basically, the sense of the community is that it's just being rammed down their throat by the developers. And I wish that more projects, especially in the Granite Bay area, that people would, the developers would make an extra effort to really reach out to the community and to get Sandy Harris's support. I mean, that says a lot and the MAC. So I think it really exemplifies the extra effort that you made and I really appreciate that.
One more, maybe?
Yes.
Go ahead. Yeah, well, yeah, I kind of took note of Sandy's comment on the sound wall. Was that at the request of your client or?
That's based, going through the mitigated NIG deck, we have to look at all the potential impacts. And those impacts, as we know, are sometimes to the outside, sometimes to the inside. But because of the traffic and the speed along there and the distance from the travel lanes, that was the mitigation based on the noise study to reduce below 60 decibels at those properties.
So it's a six-foot-high sound wall?
Yeah. Yeah. And it sits back and it'll be landscaped, you know, in front, but, you know, that is a required mitigation.
Yeah, okay. I guess, and it's the only one on that road.
Yeah. You know, the last subdivision that's been built here was probably a half-mile, three-quarters of a mile to the east. And I don't know when that was. I haven't really looked at those setbacks.
Okay. Okay, well, you answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
Anything else?
Nope. I guess that's it at the moment. We'll bring it back to the commission for their decision or discussion. And Christopher, you wouldn't mind putting it back to the recommendation there?
As a matter of discussion and picking up on Commissioner Johnson's comment on the sound walls, I know that noise has to be mitigated. I don't know if the sound wall in itself is the developer's preferred method of mitigation, but if there's a way we could craft some flexibility in there to where if it could be tastefully accomplished minus a masonry wall and still achieve the noise level and still have the desired entry features you're looking to achieve, that that flexibility be allowed in.
Maybe a berm or something instead.
I don't know. I'm just, the talent is there to come up with...
Asking staff.
With an alternative. If there's a way we could allow that flexibility in one of the conditions or something, then that could be dealt with with staff at a later date. I don't know.
Right. Yeah, because I would agree with both of you. This just doesn't consistent with the community and if it's really kind of going to stand out as something kind of odd.
On the other hand, if that's the best way to achieve it, they know their business.
Right.
If I may respond, there are other means of reaching that same level of attainment. I'm not certain we would need a variance. For instance, if we went with landscaping and a wrought iron fence, would we need a variance if we're...
If you meet the standard.
Okay. So I think we would be open and perhaps it'd be a DRC review and approval prior to improvement plan approval to explore other alternatives to reach the mitigation as required by the noise study, but explore the possibility of something other than a masonry wall. Maybe it's a combination of a little bit of a berm and a, you know, a base masonry upon which a fence sits.
With landscaping.
Like you say, I would like to just create a, you know, a modification to an existing condition or a new condition that just allows that flexibility and encourages the conversation to take place with staff and would trust that it could be dealt with.
Fine, at that, without... Looks like they're working on it.
Just do a second.
So...
Other measures?
County Council, I have something that you'd like to comment on, how much flexibility we can suggest?
Chris, it's my understanding that the sound wall was included as part of the mitigated NIG deck. Is that correct?
Correct.
So if we're going to be changing the mitigated negative declaration, then we wouldn't be certifying... certifying this particular mitigated neg deck at this time.
Okay, so probably not a can of worms we want to open up.
If the commission were to provide staff direction to go back to relook at the mitigated negative declaration, to provide alternative mitigation measures or the ability for alternative mitigation measures, that would be up to the commission. But that would need to be part of the motion that you make today, which would not be certifying or approving this mitigated neg deck as it stands.
Would it mean that it would have to come back to us again? We certainly don't want to delay the project if we decide to approve.
If you're going to make changes to the mitigated neg deck of what's included today to this particular one, then it would need to come back to the planning commission.
Which also means it would have to be recirculated for public comment. And we're, you know, as we all are well aware, the construction season is so short that we'd like to, as we've expressed, we'd like to accommodate that, but hadn't thought about that consideration. That would be a delay we couldn't suffer.
All right.
Well, if there's other means that you can achieve the requirements of the existing negative deck, then you wouldn't have to change it, right?
So if I can jump in here real quick, so condition number 59 includes a mitigation measure, and the way it reads is, "The project shall construct a six-foot-tall noise wall/bARRIER" where the project fronts onto Joe Rogers Road. And it goes on, but whatever that wall barrier is, I think the intent is to meet whatever that, you know, that decibel limitation is. So I think there is flexibility in there, if I'm not just painting on what that wall or barrier. I mean, we've often done berms with a shorter wall, so if it falls under a, you know, wall/ barrier or something of that sort, I think, you know, it allows a little more flexibility than just a solid six-foot wall. So that's acceptable to everybody. I think, you know, that language is already included in there without having to modify anything.
And I guess I would add that in the future, when we have projects like this that are in very rural areas where there's such an inconsistency like this that would stand out in the community, that the language be as flexible as possible on meeting the requirements.
Perfect. But I would agree with EJ's assessment on here, and Chris and I were just looking, I mean, having the word barrier in there does provide, I think, adequate flexibility for us to explore some other options, so.
Okay, good. All right. And I guess, any other discussion, or somebody want to make a motion? Are we going to torture Jeff again?
He's a good reader.
No, I'd just like, I'd like to make a comment before someone makes a motion. First of all, that is a, you really did reach out to the community, and that's really great. But I think a lot of things, we're going for this project, is it's small, and there's no zoning change, so that was a biggie. But it's still, that being said, I did read through quite a bit of the drainage and hydrology, and, you know, hydrology reports and traffic mitigation reports fall in with the same category as far as I'm concerned. I don't think they're exact science, although I'm a electrical engineer, and I'm sure other engineers can say that about electrical engineers, not an exact science either. But it does have a certain amount of, I don't know, I don't know what you call it, just engineering, and I'm just, my question would be, is any other projects that we've had these kind of really detailed drainage and hydrology on where the project's been built out, and then you go back and check and see if it really works like it? I'm sure, I'm not saying that you need to do that, but that's what I would be interested in as a commissioner, even as a staff person, to see if this stuff really works after everything is said and done. But I think they answered the question, though, about that downstream stuff, that their project is not going to increase it. And I think that's the important thing. But so they didn't really even have to go downstream and survey and all that, but they went, took that extra step. So from that standpoint, but I would just still like to see some of that, maybe adjunct stuff, come back to us, just see if it really worked. Because it is difficult, because there's, like you mentioned, there's all this vegetation in the way, and if a culvert hasn't been cleared out, that causes all kinds of backups and stuff, even in more developed areas like Roseville, where I live, that still's a problem. But they did a good job on it. Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comments?
Okay, no comments. I will make a motion, if that's all right. I would make a motion that the planning commission, subject to the conditions attached to the staff report, Attachment E adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program for the, when a state project is set forth in Attachment F and supported by the findings in the staff report.
Okay. I'll second. Okay, we've moved and seconded through.
Okay, that was a first with Mr. Moss, and a second by Mr. Rokuchi. Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we approve the vesting tentative subdivision map to allow for the subdivision of 5.49 acres into 10-lot, single-family residential development, supported by the findings in the staff report.
I'd like to second that.
The movement seconded through the vote.
I have a first by Mr. Moss, a second by Mr. Hersog. So Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we approve a variance to reduce the minimum front setbacks normally required in a residential, single-family zone district on lots 1 through 5 to allow a front/rear yard setback of 40.5 feet from the center line of Sturm Lane, where 60 feet is normally required, supported by the findings in the staff report.
Second.
And subject to the conditions of approval.
And conditional approval.
Oh, and the conditions of approval. Thank you.
I have a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Rokuchi. Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I guess we are done for the day, so.
Oh, you forgot something.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, appeals, thank you. You have 10 days, and anybody who wants to appeal this, and it'll cost you $581.